Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our regularly scheduled work session of the Board of Commissioners of Haverford Township. Today is Monday, June 3rd, 2024. Before we met, before this meeting today, we met in executive session in the A to discuss a legal issue. Herman, will you call the board?
Commissioner Gondak?
Present.
Commissioner Forstie Grubb?
Here.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Here.
Commissioner Cavender?
Here.
Commissioner Quinn?
Here.
Commissioner Hart?
Here.
Commissioner McCollum?
Here.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Here.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Chief? This is the flag of the United States of America. In the Republic of America, we stand. A nation for the God, individual liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Chief. As I indicated at the outset, this is one of our work sessions and one of our regularly scheduled work sessions. The first item on our agenda this evening will be a summary update from Commissioners Trombetta and Gondak discussing the Women and Minority Business Enterprise Grant Program Award.
Mr. President.
Madam Commissioner.
As the Chair of the Commissioners Economic Development Committee, I am pleased to report the outcomes of the Women and Minority Business Enterprise Grant Program authorized by the Board of Commissioners through resolution on July 10th, 2023. This program allocated $101,000 from the Federal American Rescue Plan Act funds. This funding provided $10,000 grant awards plus a one-year membership with our economic development partner, Discover Haverford, offering mentoring and additional exposure within the business community. In our October 2023 regular meeting, 10 exceptional applications were recommended for awards. These grantees have utilized the funds to grow and promote their businesses, contributing to the overall economic development of Haverford Township. At this point, I'd like to introduce Commissioner Gondak, who served on the committee that recommended the awardees.
Thank you. Yes, I had the pleasure and honor of being on this committee and being part of the review, the review process of all of these grant applications. And we did have, you know, we had a lot of grants requested. Obviously, we wish we could have given even more money to even more people, but, you know, funds are limited. But this money did go to the benefit of 10 recipients. Commissioner Trombetta, I didn't know if you wanted to read the recipients themselves or before I went into the, some of the projects that they worked on?
You want me to list them?
You wanted to?
Go ahead.
Okay. The 10 applicants that were recipients of this year, of this grant program were Amy's Hair Creations, Bridgie Bee's Floral Creations, CrossFit MFP, Haverford Dance Center, Headlines by Renee, Mainline Therapeutic Wellness Center, Novita Boutique, Spanish Exploradores, I apologize, Tuscan Cafe and the Dimes Club. As you can tell from some of the names, whether you know them or not, they are all local businesses. They are all locally owned and operated, and they did great things with these awards that included such projects as exterior renovations by repointing and repairing their building exteriors, making them more welcome and aesthetically pleasing to customers in the community, creating more attractive signage, being able to actually improve exterior lighting. And a lot of these businesses even were able to utilize these funds for increasing advertising efforts that led to increased sales in just a short period of time, which, you know, was helped them move further in terms of recovering from the financial effects of the COVID-19 pandemic and continuing to grow as strong local businesses. We look forward to being able to hopefully continue to work with these groups in the future as more grant programs come down the way. But I'd like to also personally thank the Board of Commissioners and specifically Commissioner Trombetta for spearheading this particular grant program and look forward to being able to put more of these together in the future.
Thank you, and I just want to give a special shout out to our Assistant Township Manager, Amy Cuthbertson, who really led this program and helped to execute it. So, thank you.
You're here. Well, thank you both. Next on our agenda is any Commissioner Committee updates. I will open the floor to my colleagues. Is there any Commissioner who would like to update the public or us on their committee activities? Hearing none. I will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is our monthly police report. From our chief.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening, Chief.
Monthly Chief Report for May of 2024. Criminal arrests, we had 18, traffic citations, 402, non-traffic citations, 21, written warnings, 63, and 466 parking tickets. The Police Department now is operating on our annual grant for what used to be called Click and Ticket, which is traffic enforcement in areas on state highways, and Darby Road is one of them. We received complaints numerous times about speeding in the 25-mile zone up on, by Woodley in those areas and by that crosswalk where people are complaining about. Officers were up there last week and wrote multiple citations, but we had a resident who came out and complained that we were bothering the neighbors by writing tickets for people going home. So, this is what we're faced with when we get the complaints from the same neighbors and then we go enforce it and they complain that we're enforcing. And what happens is, like we said, we always get one of the neighbors first. So, burglary attempts, Unit Block of College Avenue, this is a daytime burglary at 5:30 in the evening. Police responded to a subject in the rear yard who was attempting to enter. He was arrested, taken for mental health evaluation. Lower Marion did have him earlier that day, and he was released for whatever reasons, but he was taken for mental health and then summoned for arrest when that was completed. We had a mental health incident in the 800 block of Grove Place. A 37-year-old male was taken for treatment. We had three motor vehicle thefts. 200 block of Pickwick, a Toyota RAV4 was taken. Hollow Run Apartments, a orange and black motorcycle. And 1600 block of Serre, a Honda Cross Tour was taken. We had six thefts, autos and attempts. 1320 West Sister Pike, Pepe's Automotive, customer car was entered. 400 block of Olympic, two unknown males were seen on security video, entered the person's victim's three vehicles, nothing was taken. Freedom Playground, unknown actor has entered a parked Volvo and stole the following: a wallet containing $1,300 in cash, Pennsylvania driver's license, Capital One credit card, a TruMark credit card, a Santander DeP credit card. And then the cards were used in a dollar store with a location on the 200 block of Glendale. A work van was taken with numerous sets of tools. 1600 block of Lawrence, a Cadillac convertible was taken from a Honda. And 600 block of Furlong, a Cadillac convertible was taken from a Mitsubishi. We had three motor vehicle, bicycle thefts from around the high school and the middle school, K-9 usage. We were asked to go out to George Hill Correctional Facility with the rest of the K-9 officers in the county to do a narcotics check in the prison. 33 East Eagle with the Wawa, K-9 Winnie, check the rear Wawa for suspicious mail. Assistant Marple Township for stolen vehicle. Assistant Radnor, Township Police for narcotics sweep. Assistant Marple Township again for an accident where suspects fled. And Radnor Police for a K-9 Axle was deployed for a air sniff on a Nissan. One thing, I think I sent all the Commissioners an email last week, one of the new frauds that we're seeing that's happening, and one person lost a large amount of money with, with, help me out, I forgot what I was going to say. What, which one was it that I sent you?
There was a scam.
Oh, the?
There was a jury.
Yeah.
And they were using them.
Yes, yes, the scam was, they hacked, not hacked, they used the Police Department's phone number, which is done through a computer, claiming that they didn't show over court and they owed money for that. Some people buy into that very quickly sadly, and like I said, one person lost about $35,000 in cash that she sent to a fake, a website that the person obviously will never be caught. But we're seeing a lot more of it. We dig it in the, in the papers, so people are aware of it. I asked the Commissioners, which you did send out information on it, but it has become one of the newest scams we're seeing out there. So, the court will never call you if you miss your court date, not your court date for your jury duty. Court won't call you, they send you mail, but nobody will call you and ask for money if you miss your jury date and you're summoned to jury duty and you miss. It comes by mail and they'll send you a follow-up letter if you do miss it. The DA is aware of it, I spoke to him about it, and they're also very concerned about that. It's not just here, obviously, it's happening elsewhere.
And Chief, it comes up as your phone number?
Comes up as our phone, it comes up as the Police Department phone number, yes. Commissioner, sadly, it's easily done through computers. We all get those, those phone calls, you look at the number, you recognize it, it's not the person you think it is.
Thank you. Chief, just a quick question, obviously, with the weather turning around and kids out and about more, especially schools coming to an end, how's everything been with regards to juveniles in the township? You know, a while past, we had some issues, has everything been quiet since?
We sent them all to Ocean City and Wildwood.
Well.
But they're back, so we'll see. We haven't had any problems luckily, but we expect things to pick up and we are, the Bike Patrol will be out there this summer again, targeting the parks. And even during the day when they have the park camp start, we'll be out there with the camp counselors just to, you know, do programs with them. But we are out there, especially on the weekends. If we see an area pop up that becomes a problem, we'll target that very quickly, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions for the Chief before we let him go? Hearing and seeing none. The next thing for us to now consider is the items that are on our agenda for next week. We will be, we will be doing a second reading of ordinance P.7 relating to traffic. Wasn't controversial last month, I don't suspect it will be next week either. The next ordinance, number P.9, is amending Chapter 130, which relates to peddling and soliciting. Does anybody even say peddling anymore? But soliciting, I think one of our colleagues has a question about this ordinance, and so I will let them reveal themselves before I call on them.
Are you asking a question? So, Mr. Holmes, I'd like to ask a question about the, the hours that we're establishing for commercial solicitation. Right now, the ordinance says that solicitation would be permitted between 9:00 AM and 7:00 PM between October 1st and March 31st. And then again, it changes during April through September from 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And I was wondering if there was any possibility of maybe making it a little bit, limiting it a little bit on the PM side, especially because in this area, it gets dark around 4:30 and people are maybe reluctant to come to doors, even though we do have required FBI background checks for all applicants and a do not solicit registry. So, I was just wondering if that was a possibility to maybe make it instead of 7:00 PM, 6:00 PM, and likewise on the other end, instead of 8:00 PM, 7:00 PM?
So, I don't know whether this derives from state law or whether this is purely up to us. Obviously, the start of the day, 9:00 AM, is always daylight, but yes, you are right, that 7:00 PM during Eastern Daylight Time is, is dark. I would be concerned, I will admit to you, that to the extent that anybody is doing this after their own work hours, it would kind of rule that out if we think of nighttime, you know, if we think of sunset as the, as the end of that. Understand that we've then really are ruling out even, even after-school activities for some children with the sun going down at, you know, 4:45.
Well, that's why I said not, not to time it for, you know, when the, when sunset, but just make it a little bit earlier in the evening.
Holmes, I can address why these numbers were chosen. I mean, it's, it is a balancing act of trying to find something as early as possible in the evenings, yet still not have the ordinance be subject to challenge as a restriction on commercial speech, as there is a right to commercial speech. A lot of ordinances just do nine, some don't have this change. This is a little bit more unique that it does switch earlier when it does get dark earlier, even though it does get dark before seven during those winter months. This was taken from, I believe it was the Pennsylvania Utility Commission's regulations that they impose upon those that are door, door soliciting in the energy market. You may have had them come to your door. And it was the earliest ones that we could find. So, we felt comfortable going up to these times. If you went before these times, it might hold up more, but I wouldn't be as confident in that way. So, this was sort of playing it safe, yet still moving it up to the earliest that we could. That's really how these hours were established.
Thank you for that explanation.
We also, we have, as part of this ordinance in the past, and I think nothing's changing in this ordinance, there are a number of restrictions in place and, let's say, kind of safety measures that we, that we incorporate, registering with the, with our Police Department, and also the requirements of folks to carry credentials, as well as the requirement to obey any indication on somebody's porch or front sidewalk or front door that says that they prefer not to be subject to solicitors or peddlers. And so, while I appreciate your concern, I mean, I think the concern is both folks who are out in the dark, as well as folks in their homes having a stranger come to their door after, after dark. And I think, I think we've taken as many steps as we can to empower our, our Police Department and, and to empower our citizens to protect themselves from, from what I would say, you know, not criminal elements, but, you know, maybe perhaps just the things that people consider a hassle or harassment of getting unwanted solicitors at their door. Chief, you seem to be itching to speak.
Yeah, we have a do not solicit list also that anyone can sign up on the Police Department website. And just last week, Mr. Walco and I had conversations, we were having problems with a, one particular larger company that came into town, and we did revoke their permit because of repeated violation. We had six complaints for the do not solicit an hour, so we actually pulled their permit because of that.
Do we, and, and when someone comes to our township to receive a permit to solicit, they receive a copy of the do not solicit list and?
They, they do. The problem is.
They're supposed to map it out?
Large, that they have many, many solicitors out there, either they don't pay attention to them, or they just ignore them, or they just don't look at them, you know. But, but we did pull it very quickly because of a number of complaints. It was continually every day.
Well, good job, Chief. Thank you. John?
My door gets knocked on just like everybody else's, and I'm on the do not solicit list. So, the same night, two, two employees in the Deputy Chief's house were also knocked up on. So, you know, we had one recent incident where they walked out of here beginning of summer and they, the first street they hit was my street, and I was the second house they hit. So, not hit, but they solicited, so.
Yeah, let's be careful of our terminology, but nonetheless, that's, that's, that's lousy timing. Yeah, I, these, that, that reflects an appalling lack of diligence on their part, yeah. Or certainly, at least a god-awful amount of bad luck, so.
Holmes, just to make sure that everyone's on the same page on this, this ordinance, or I should say, this code is in effect right now, and really, this only makes three changes. It changes, one, what has previously said, that you can't do it after sundown, to establish those hours we talked about, because that sundown or sunset language has been found in Constitution. Two, it codifies that do not solicit list, which is currently administratively in place, and anyone can sign up for that right now, but it, again, codifies that into the ordinance. And three, it changes the type of background check that the police will do from a state police background check to an FBI background check. It's my understanding that would provide for a more comprehensive check for out-of-state convictions, not just in-state matters. So, it hopefully will be, improve the administration as well. So, those are really the only three things that this ordinance does to the pre-existing peddling and solicitation chapter.
But theoretically, I mean, 6 o'clock, 6:00 PM, you, you think that would be up to a challenge? Because it does seem, I, again, we're sort of expanding, right now, if for November, December, January and February, you wouldn't be able to solicit at 7:00 PM. It's been dark for an hour, hour and a half. 6:00 does sound to me more like a reasonable time.
I, I use these numbers because, again, based upon the state, I, I think it could be subject to challenge, whether or not you wanted to face that. I'm certainly not recommending against it. I just thought it'd be more conservative. The idea, I think the challenge would be then that, that you would not have time to actually reach people after work or within that hour or so, assuming they got home at 5:00. But certainly, I, I wouldn't recommend against altering those if that's what the majority of board would like to do. But again, I feel comfortable with these numbers as they are.
What, what had been the hours?
Or, and this is just for commercial solicitation. This does not impact non-commercial solicitation, be it politics or religious prophetizing. That's still at 9:00 PM, and that's in the code right now at 9:00 PM. This, previously, it just said from 9:00 AM to sundown.
I know.
And that sundown language was, again, found to not be Constitution. And quite subjective, so hard to enforce sometimes as well.
I think if you knock, knock on anybody's door at 9:00, I think you lost a vote there. Well, perhaps we think about 6:30 and 7:30. Or Eastern Standard Time and Eastern Daylight Time. That would seem to give a decent amount of time after the end of the workday. 6:30, but not so deep into the night that people are, that it's been dark for an hour and a half. And, and 7:30, I, I don't know. I, I, you think 6:30 and 7:30 would survive scrutiny, John?
I think that we would be able to justify it. And the worst thing that would happen if someone really wanted to challenge it, that we could work something out with them and address the change at a later time. So, I don't think that we would be in significant legal jeopardy if you wanted to make that change. And if we were.
It's our first reading, right? Next week is our first reading?
Correct. We can make that change today easily.
I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
We can make that change easily today, change it throughout the ordinance and still be in a position before and timely.
Well, I, I would recommend on the basis of Commissioner Forstie Grubb and Commissioner Hart's comments that, and your admonition that we not act ultimately unlawfully, why don't we kick it back a half hour on each?
We can make that change.
Any thoughts, comments, objections to that?
My only sort of devil's advocate, I mean, I guess I'm okay with the times, but it sounds based on the Chief and my own experience of people making, making calls about this issue, that when there's violations, it's, they're not taking in our ordinance into account at all. And it, it's more of the blatant nature and the, the police, if they have to enforce it, are able to enforce it. I guess my only concern, while it probably wouldn't be a big deal if someone did challenge it, I mean, if, if Mr. Walco got these times based on, you know, rational reasons that have already been approved by the utility companies, I guess my inclination would be to leave it alone, but it's not strong. I'm just sort of expressing the thought as I listen to the conversation about it.
It's a fair point, it's an excellent point. Mr. McCloskey, let me, we are certainly capable as a board of voting and amending and doing anything at our meeting next week for the first reading. It is whatever ordinance is passed next week that would qualify for the first reading. And anybody watching now understands there's debate about the timing, so I would suggest that everybody consider, all of us on the board, consider the times that we've discussed. Anybody watching who has an interest in this ordinance and wants to comment in the public comment next week about this, give us their thoughts. It's a fair point about kind of punishing the innocent by cutting back the, the times because we're worried about people who don't pay any attention to the ordinance. So, let's, 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 let's evaluate the ordinance next week, pay particular attention to that time, and then see what a majority of the board thinks. It's kind of like a plan.
I do have one non-timing related question about this.
Yes.
So, it looks like when I, when I look at this, the do not solicit registry, that's, that's new. We don't have one of them right now, is that correct?
We do.
Oh, we do?
It's in place.
In the code, I must have been looking in a different section then.
No, it's, it's not in the code, but it's administratively.
Oh, administer, okay.
That's what this ordinance would put it into the code.
Put it into the code. And I guess the only question I have is, is when I read this, it looks like, and this makes sense, it's put in there based on house address. And I guess my question would be that what if you move and the next person moves in, theoretically, maybe they might not want to be on the registry, but how would they even know? You understand what I mean? Like, if somebody put, you know, if I put my house on the registry and then I moved five years from now, everyone who lives at my house in perpetuity would be on that do not?
That's correct, yes, unless we're going to take it off.
Do not solicit list.
Well, yes, that's correct. I would guess that probably would still get solicited, but.
Well, they still might get solicited, but I mean, technically, their name would be on the list, they could, you know, use the, okay, just, just, I, I just throwing that out there, I just wasn't sure if there was any, I wasn't sure if with, when it was administratively before it was code, was there any, did you guys ever go through and try to clean the list up now and then, or?
We'd have to look at the real estate transfers at the same time. I'm sure there's a way we could do it. I'd have to look into it, I'm sure we could figure that out.
Yeah, I'm not trying to overcomplicate the matter, just kind of something that popped into my head as I was kind of reviewing it.
Give me a couple of days and I'll, I'll have an answer for you.
Any other thoughts or comments on this? The next thing we will consider then are a number of resolutions next week. They will be resolutions relating to the Penn Dot Winter Service Agreement, our Code's Department Destruction of Documents Regulations, a use of ARPA funds for the Darby Creek Invasive Project, and then resolutions also relating to the use of ARPA funds for Bailey Park Sanitary Sewer and Dill Road Sewer Lining. And then finally, we will be considering a resolution relating to property on Hastings Avenue, a subdivision and a reverse subdivision taking place on Hastings. Also, Resolution Number 2384 for the use of ARPA funds for the purchase of bike racks and the purchase of ARPA funds under another resolution for recreation facilities. Any questions or comments on these resolutions for next week?
I'd like to ask what kind of bike racks are going to be purchased and installed.
So, Commissioner Forstie Grubb would like to ask what kind of bike racks are going to be installed, so, anybody know?
Just because, I will raise my hand. I do know we are working with Discover Haverford to find optimal spots for them, and they have been on our ARPA plans since we passed the budget last year, so I know this is something that they have on their radar too. So, we're working with them to, to establish the exact design and location of those bike racks.
And the locations, they're going to all be on township property?
Correct.
Okay.
And just to follow up, since Jerry and Mr., Commissioner Hart and I do do a lot of bicycling, the configuration of those bike
the configuration of those bike racks can be really important, because some are quite, they're designed for bikes to be locked up in theory, but in practicality, not really functional.
They have gotten input from Peter Pugloneisi, and so they have talked to the biking community. So I think we're getting something.
Thank you.
Yeah, sometimes they seem more interested in making a modern art statement than they do in actually securing bicycles. I am hip to that.
I had some questions, too, on the winter service agreement. I just, are we paid a set rate, or is it based on the mileage that we?
PennDOT pays us to clear the snow and ice from the state roads, except Westchester Pike and Township Line, and it's a set rate, and it's in the agreement. It's a five-year agreement.
Okay, and so it's a set rate, so no matter how much we plow, or is it?
The state has their own, I guess, guidelines of what is considered a standard winter, and that's what will be paid for. It's about $138,000 a year. It goes up, I believe, 2% per year, and as you said, it's a five-year term, and then renewable for another five-year term. If it's an extreme winter, the state has guidelines for establishing that, like if there's blizzard after blizzard, that we have gotten in the past, in recent years, where they'll call it a severe winter adjustment, where they will give us additional funds to cover those additional costs.
But they don't take any back if it's?
They do not, no, no. No, we do win on those drier winters, so let's hope for another one.
Dave, I have a question on the Darby Creek Invasive Weeds Project. Could you elaborate on that a little bit?
I'm going to ask Brian Barrett to explain that.
We'd be working with a company called Weeds Inc. who would spray the areas after cutting them down. You have to cut them down and spray them, and there's a specific timing related to when they start to take nutrients back into the root system, because if you don't do that, they'll come back with a vengeance. So the Weeds Inc. has applicators that are licensed to do this. They're very aware of anybody who might be sensitive to that. They get a list of people in the area that may be identified as being sensitive, and they will notify those people. And we've worked with this gentleman, Brian O'Neill, from Weeds Inc. for a while, for probably the last 10 years we've worked with him, and he does a good job.
Great, thank you.
Just follow up on that. This is the area from Vermont and Glendale down the back towards the stream, towards McDonald Field.
Gotcha.
Yeah, there's a map there, so it's that whole area that we're?
That's correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
I have a question about the Hastings Project.
Yes.
When I look at it, it looks like they're basically doing a land development and adding a fourth house to that area. Is that correct?
It's on, okay. Now it's on. There's no land development proposed with this, so that lots just to remain open at this point.
Okay, so.
They're reverse.
Hey, I guess let me, like, let me ask this question. Can you just take a moment and just explain exactly what's going on over on Hastings Ave?
Sure. We have a copy, yeah. We have a copy of the plan. They are proposing to reverse subdivide two existing lots to create one new lot. No construction is proposed as part of the application, and the applicant did have to get a variance from the zoning hearing board. So for Lot 3, so you're looking at Lot 1, 2, and 3 across the board. Do you guys have an image of it? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, page 43.
So the lot line is being dissolved on Lot 2. Lot 3 has an existing non-conforming porch, and the shed on Lot 2 will be removed, so it will be an entirely open lot. And so you go from the two lots to three lots.
Okay.
Okay.
I appreciate you clarifying that.
Yeah.
Now, I guess my follow-up would be, I don't know anyone who creates open lots without the intention of building on them, so is it a safe assumption that at some point, a developer intends to put a house on this lot?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, so then I guess?
Probably just haven't gotten there yet.
Okay, then I guess that would lead to my ultimate question, is it seems that we're continuing down the path in this township of developers picking up every empty inch of space they can get their hands on and sticking houses on them. Is there any update, or I don't know who I would even throw this to, but is there any update on where we stand with the comprehensive plan?
That would be me as well.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
I'll keep you in the hot seat then.
Yeah, it's fine. I am actively working on the, so from what I hear, some of the remaining work is formatting. There is a finishing committee for the comprehensive plan that I met with a member of the finishing committee on Friday, and we have a to-do list, basically, to bring the comprehensive plan to the finish line. And part of that is just some of the formatting that needs to be done. And then we will basically bring it to the finishing committee and to the board. Those are the last steps, when we feel like it's ready.
Okay, do you have, have you, and you might not have, but have you given any discussions to timelines or any kind of target dates or anything like that?
I haven't gotten that for you.
Fair enough.
Sorry.
No problem. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any other questions or comments about these resolutions? So for a number of these resolutions, there is always a corresponding contract to go along with it, a contract award or purchase, and that would be the Invasive Weeds Project at Darby Creek. Public Works would be doing the Bailey Park Sanitary Sewer Replacement, as well as the Dill Road Sewer Lining, and Parks and Rec would be doing the things that Park and Rec were doing, which was, I just read it, apologize.
It's tennis courts and basketball courts.
The tennis courts and the basketball courts. Oh, there they are. Right, so two tennis courts at Grassland Park, fence replacement, basketball court at Grassland Park, and also at Elwell Field, two tennis courts, and the fence replacement around the tennis court at Grange Park, the construction of two basketball court, well, the resurfacing of two basketball courts. And then at Grassland and Hilltop, baseball backstops replacing the current backstops. Anything else from Parks and Rec?
Yeah, there's no backstops on this one. Oh, I'm sorry, it's a basketball backboard, I'm sorry. It's a basketball backboard.
Oh, gosh, it says backstops, okay, but these are backboards?
These are backboards. We purchase them separately because we've had trouble getting the exact ones from the contractors. They tend to look at the cheaper ones, and we're looking for ones that are very specific.
All right, we're avoiding the glass ones that people shatter, right?
Yes.
All right, good. And then we will also be considering some change orders for the Haverford Township Free Library renovation that is underway. Right, sorry, I was looking at an earlier agenda, and in Public Works, in addition to Bailey Park and Dill Road, there's also streetlight pole painting that will be undertaken. We will be purchasing, we will be undertaking a contract award for that project as well. We were going to, but I think we are going to table an appointment to the Parks and Recreation Board. We have a number of applicants to fill, who have volunteered to fill an open space in our Parks and Recreation Board, and I believe our current schedules of our various commissioners would make doing interviews this week, I think, impossible, so we will try to do those interviews prior to the end of June for an evaluation at our July meeting of a volunteer to fill out the unexpired term that is now currently open in the Parks and Recreation Board. And then, for our consideration, at any time, the Ninth Ward can provide us with his senior citizens advisory council appointment, including tonight if he wants. Does not spoil the surprise.
But just don't, they don't wait five or six months.
Nobody I know. Yeah, so we will also, as a board, be undertaking three proclamations at the June meeting. We will be, as this board likes to do, we will be heralding the accomplishments of one of our esteemed volunteers, Susanna Baruko. So tune in or come to the meeting next week and hear what Susanna accomplished, how she was recognized in her field, and how lucky we are to have her time and attention for Haverford Township. We will also recognize the Juneteenth celebration, and we will also recognize June's status as Pride Month. So that is the current agenda for next week's meeting. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments on the remaining items on the agenda? Any of my colleagues have anything else they would like to add this evening? Hearing none, I will entertain.
Do we need to approve a contract for the bike racks?
If we're allocating money, don't we also have to approve the actual contract?
So we are doing a ARPA resolution. If there is not a corresponding contract, there may be a month in between. Anybody know the answer to this?
No, the contract has not been formalized or executed yet, but we did want the approval to proceed with that one when Discover Have Refard finalizes it with the vendor.
Excellent, okay. So as I suspected, we'll do, we're getting the ARPA designation out of the way, and then when the contract is ready to go, it'll be, you think, July?
Actually, if it stays under the $10,000 allocation that we're using for ARPA, it wouldn't come before the board, as the township manager can authorize anything up to $10,000, but if it was over 10, we would come before the board with, to award a contract.
Well, Dave, not to put any pressure on you, but, you know, as long as they're not easily hacked, do what you can. Otherwise, come to us in July. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
We are adjourned.